Duval City Council meeting to order. Would you please join me in the flag salute as soon as the clerk gets the image up? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Birdnicki. Councilmember Iyer.
Present.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Nathlin.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Under additions or corrections to the agenda, under consent, please add claims in the for September 1st, 2020 in the amount of $345,619.31. And under Mayor's scheduled report, please add finance revenue projections and remove letter of support for agritourism. And with that, are there any council members that would like to speak this evening? Councilmember Lengel.
This could be included in the mayor's report, so I'll just sort of advise the ideas.
So do you just want to tap into my report? And I assume you're talking about our meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, I was just going to mention the topics, so maybe you've got them. One is the COVID grants, and the other is food trucks, which you've already told us about. And there are questions regarding Sean's report.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, we'll hit all of that. Thank you. All right, so with that, no other council members wanting to speak. Do we have a motion for adoption of this evening's council agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved.
Michelle Hoag, second.
All right, councilmember, Mayor Tim Remington moved. Councilmember Hoag seconded approval of this evening's agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Councilmember Birdnicki, I move that. We approved the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Birdnicki moved. Councilmember Iyer seconded to approve this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we will move on to comments from the audience. Clerk, did we have any written comments submitted for this evening?
We had one, and I was requested to read it aloud, and it is as follows. This was also emailed to council prior to the meeting. Dear Mayor Okalander and councilmembers, the Snow Valley Senior Center requests that you begin work, that as you begin work on the 2021 budget, that you remember local nonprofits and crucial role we play in Duval, in making Duval a better place to live. COVID-19 has been a serious challenge to all nonprofits. The Snow Valley Senior Center lost revenue from programs, thrift store, and fundraisers when we were forced to close to regular programming. When it became clear that we could no longer safely open our sit-down noon meal program, we pivoted to delivering meals to those without transportation and takeout for those who could come and pick up meals. We spend an additional $700 each month to provide takeout containers for meals and for gloves and other supplies needed to keep staff and participants safe. The need is great. We are preparing and delivering more meals each month. Now we are averaging 60 meals per day. We used to serve around 30. The food needs, the food needs of our low-income older adults in Duval is increasing as people shelter in place to reduce their exposure to the virus. The Snow Valley Senior Center asks to be a part of your 2021 budget as an essential service. We request $10,000 to serve 40 older adults from the Duval city limits. These funds will provide food, socialization, and fitness. Hopefully, life will return to somewhat normal in 2021. But in the meantime, we are prepared to offer full virtual programs for socialization. We have regular check-in phone calls, Zoom chats, send pals with teens and senior citizens, plus lots of educational programming on Zoom. We offer Move It Monday Fitness on Facebook, plus yoga classes, and much more is in the works. We serve 1,250 meals, both delivery and takeout, in a month, and that is growing. We are here for the local seniors and able to meet their needs. Thank you for this opportunity. All the best. Lisa Jaeger, Director, Snow Valley Senior Center. P.S. We are so grateful for the special grants to assist with COVID costs and made a world of difference in our ability to quickly meet needs. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Is that the only written comment we received?
That is the only one I've received.
All right, is anyone that is attending as an attendee that would like to speak for public comment for three minutes this evening? If so, please raise your hand.
I believe you can do so on your phone by doing star nine or pound nine. I've also allowed you to talk if you want to unmute yourself.
All right. I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to take that as no further public comment. So we will move on to scheduled items. First up is Mayor's report. And just to let folks know, the reason for the removal of of the agritourism letter is because the governor reversed course on agritourism activities. Essentially, rules that came out just about a couple of weeks ago would have eliminated the pumpkin farms, and that's actually a big economic development issue for our businesses in town during the season. And I think most of us can agree that they can do it safely, just like they did berry picking at other farms all summer long. So that is why that is removed. And I will go ahead and give the floor to Ms. Mason to do our 2122 preliminary revenue projections.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, again, and Council. Dana Mason, Finance Director. Let me share my screen. All right. Can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
All righty, so I'll just dive right in here. So the intent of the presentation is to give council a look at initial revenue projections for the 2122 budget. These are preliminary projections that could change and probably will change as more information becomes available. All right, we'll start with the general fund. Since, kind of move my screen here. Since the economic impact of COVID on the next two years is difficult to determine, the projections are pretty conservative, as you can see in the table above, for the general fund. Rental activity revenue in 2021, we've projected at 25% of average and 100% of average in 2022. And I'll just move on to taxes. So 80% of the general fund revenue comes from taxes. The property tax projection assumes that the annual 1% increase, and then it adds 3% for new construction, which is what the city has averaged for the past three years. This is conservative and will be adjusted when the city receives its property tax worksheet from the county. Utility tax for waters, sewers, and storm drainage, 10% of charges for services in the utility fund. For natural gas, electric, and phone, we used 2020 estimates, so it just remained flat coming across from 2020. And then we're reducing cable TV by 10% each year, because that's been falling off for quite some while, quite a while. The 2021 sales tax projections uses 2019 revenues as a base for 2021 with a 4% increase in 2022. 2020 revenue right now is already $35,000 higher than in 2019, and it looks like it's going to continue to grow, so that's really positive. And then, so the base for 2021 may be adjusted as more information becomes available. The street fund. So overall revenue in the street fund is projected to be lower in the next biennium, mainly because of the $600,000 the city received in TIV grants in 2019 and 2020. And let's see, the street fund is set to receive 20% of the city's non-levy lift property tax, which is also projected with the 1% annual increase and then the 3% increase for sales tax for construction. State shared revenues, like the motor vehicle tax, multimodal tax, those are all based on per capita, and MRSC provides the cities with the amount per capita. So that estimate's done by them, and those are actually going to decline 8.8% over the prior biennium. Those street fund revenues are normally supplemented by the general fund revenue, and they'll be supplemented by a transfer in of $500,000 in the next biennium. At least, that's the projection. So new for 2021, 2022 is a building permit fund. Revenues for and related expenditures for buildings and permits are being pulled out of the general fund, and they'll be put into this building permit fund. And the main revenues in that fund are building permit fees, which are estimated to be $825,000, 21% higher than the prior biennium. And then the plan check fees are planned to be 43% higher than in the prior biennium. And this is based on 173 permits that are expected to be issued throughout the year or actually processed throughout the '21 and '22. And you'll see that 173 pop up quite a bit through this presentation. Big Rock Ballpark. Projected revenues for Big Rock Ballpark are higher despite a 75% reduction in activity fees in 2021 due to transfers from the general fund revenue to meet the 50% of activity fees reserve requirements. So the city is supposed to set aside 50% of all Big Rock activity fees for field replacements in the future. So this is what we're thinking about, is taking 50% of the park levy funds and putting it into Big Rock to help with operations, because that's allowable, maybe just for the two years as we have this economic downturn. And then activity fees are estimated, you know, I said at 25% in 2021 and 100% in 2022. And then Big Rock will need a transfer in from a general fund to meet those reserves requirements of $150,000 over the biennium. Oh, and I'm so sorry, I didn't even split the page. This is what I'm talking about right here. So I'll let you look at that for a few seconds, since I kind of skipped through it. All right, REIT. REIT revenues are higher than in the prior biennium in the anticipation of the 173 new homes being sold in addition to an average, and that's not all the holes, the homes being sold. I think we estimated that 120 might be sold. It's lower than the amount that's being permitted. So this is pretty conservative. And then in addition to the 20 older homes that the city averages every month, you know, has averaged every month for the last couple of years. All right, street CIP. So revenue in the Street Capital Improvement Funds are projected to be higher due to estimated grant funding for capital improvement projects. So some of the projects are, well, $4.2 million in grants for the Northeast 142nd Place sidewalks, the Third Avenue roadway and sidewalks improvements. And then this street fund also, we anticipate getting 86, or a street impact fees of 86 at the older rate, and then 67 at the 2021 and 2022 rates. And then there's also transfers into this fund from REIT 1 and REIT 2 and storm drainage, and there's an extra zero on the end there. That's only 20,000. And those are for capital improvement, street capital improvement projects to help pay for those. Park CIP. So the city received grant revenue for park projects in 2019 that is not projected in the upcoming biennium. Park impact fees are 24 units, are anticipated from 24 units in 2021, and then 23 units in 2022. And then utility funds, the operating funds. This is the charges for service projections, and the water fund uses a minimal growth in 2021, and then the 5.5% increase in 2022 for new units. Water late fees are projected at 25% of average in 2021, and then back to 100 in 2022. And then the storm sewer charges for services, which are fixed rate, are at 5% growth in 2021 and '22 for new units. All right, utility fund CIP. So utility fund revenues for CIPs are generally just the GFC charges for new units, and we're using the 173 permits that are projected for the new biennium. And then the water fund, the water operating fund transfers, sorry. The water fund transfers 1.6 million to the water CIP funds for capital improvement projects, water capital improvement projects. All right, and then last but not least, internal service fund. So internal service revenue is generated by charges to other funds and departments based on current services and replacements costs. The equipment rental or the equipment replacement fund is projected to see more revenue because fuel has been added as part of the vehicle expenditures, and then it will just be allocated out to the different departments and because it's also underfunded for the vehicles that need to be replaced. So the city will just add a chunk of that underfunded amount each year until we're fully funded. IT charges for services are higher than in the past due to a proposal to increase amount of IT services provided to the city by $100,000 a year. And then software maintenance costs for new financial software that include utility billing and permitting modules are also included in the charges and add approximately $36,000 more per year. Currently, we just pay about $18,000 a year for our software. And then building maintenance funds charges for service is revenue is lower than in the prior biennium because capital expenditures have been moved to a new facilities capital improvement fund. So we'll have a facilities CIP fund. So this fund right here is just charging other funds and departments for repair and maintenance costs, not capital costs. And then, so I just ask you to remember that this is just a preliminary, they're preliminary projections, but we wanted council to know, you know, kind of the thought process and what's coming up, and to see if you have any questions. I'll stop sharing my screen.
Mayor Tim Remington?
Thank you.
Thank you. Dana, thank you for that report. Two questions. I saw that you were adding fuel to our equipment replacement funds, and it seems like that's more of an operational cost than a replacement. What was the thought behind that?
Well, we do all of our R and M in the equipment replacement fund. So that's where all the vehicles, you know, oil changes, stuff like that. So it's the cost of maintaining and running the vehicles. We don't necessarily have to put it in there, but I thought it would be easier because what we could do is just charge it to the fund every year and then use our fuel report to allocate it to the departments every year based on use. So before, we were allocating fuel to the departments based on FTE, and the finance department, who barely ever drives one of the cars, was getting charged a lot of money. So were other departments. So this is just a new way of allocating it out.
Yeah, that makes sense. So within that fund, it's divided out, though, so you can...
Absolutely. It's been allocated to the different departments based on, it's based on vehicle use, actually.
Okay. The last question, this is maybe more hypothetical. So on our parking lot in the Cow, we've had clearing grading for a while, and it's another revenue source. We have a lot of big trucks providing wear and tear, so I'm hopeful, you know, maybe by the time we get to next year, we can have worked on that and have clearing grading fee in. So that would add additional revenues. Where would that likely go if we have that additional revenue? Any thoughts to that, or Mayor?
Yeah, or Steve. So clearing, I don't know if that's part of, does it go through the permitting process? So that may be, go into the building and permitting fund.
Mr. Lenishewski, would you like to expand on that a little bit? As far as timing and...
Sure, thank you. Stephen Lenishewski, Public Works, for those involved here. Good evening. So we talked about that, oh boy, probably November, and it has not hit the party list as we've been a little overwhelmed. I honestly don't think revenue-wise, it's much to count on. Sure, it would be an increase over the relative amount we collect now, but it's fairly de minimis in its amount. It's not like a building permit, which brings in a lot. It's under $5,000, not five or plus figures. So it's, I don't know, I'm not too worried about the loss of revenue. However, it will add up, but there's not a lot of drastic change, I guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nathlin?
I just wanted to say how much I appreciated Dana's, Director Mason's, work on that. One thing she provided to the finance committee that might be interesting to the rest of council is line by line, she showed her rationale behind how she projected forward, and I felt like a way of understanding how we were making our revenue projections. And, you know, if there were adjustments based on, you know, coronavirus impacts or just experience. So anyway, I don't know if we got emailed that or if it's actually in our finance committee little directory, but it was such a helpful document to understand how we were projecting our revenue. And in case anyone else is interested, I'd love to make sure everyone else had access to that. It was just really, it was, it was very disciplined approach of documenting rationale. Anyway, the other thing I wanted to bring up that was also mentioned during Director Mason's presentation was the allocation of the parks levy. So this was the King County Parks Levy, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Mason, the King County Parks Levy that passed just recently. The way they are providing that money to cities is much greater than we've ever received before. So it's a very large amount of money, and it can be used for maintenance. And so I really feel like it's a legislative, an important legislative decision to contemplate how we want to use that money. Is it sustainable? Should we start, you know, having it, you know, supplement the maintenance of our parks? Or, you know, do we have something else we need to do with it? But I just thought it was interesting that, you know, that was proposed of how to use the money, and I think it warrants maybe some attention from council just to talk about it. So we don't need to do that tonight, but those were the two that we had talked about at finance.
And Councilmember Nathlin, to that point, you know, it's the mayor's proposed budget, and then we'll discuss revenue, how revenue is allocated can be shifted throughout the process. This is preliminary, so there aren't any final decisions on that, and that's part of the legislative deliberating process. So once we get that proposed budget out, that's when we'll have those bigger discussions on some of those revenue sources and where we want to allocate them. But right now, that's what Dana, our director, has come up with, and we still have a lot of work to do internally before that first proposed budget. Reserve levels could change. All sorts of things can change between now and that proposed budget. But there will be ample opportunity for that discussion and making sure that that money is prioritized appropriately. Councilmember Lengel?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of basic changes, not changes, but comments. One of the things I've been thinking about is we have three important grant applications outstanding. And as we move into the budget process, I would really like to understand what our potential obligations are under those grants. So I guess here, I'm letting everybody know that I really want to look at those grant applications. Not because I have any quarrels with them, but I really want to understand, as we move into '21, '22, what our obligations might be and which funding source they might come from. So that's one point. Second of all, I just want to say, I'm very accustomed to financial planning by business objective, and that's exactly what Director Mason has done here. And it's super important to understand how that works. And if we don't, if we don't start thinking about our lines of business, it's not that, we don't really lose money, but we also don't allocate our money in the best way. And according to, you know, past comments from Councilmember Nathlin in particular, we really want to align that first-time money with first-time expenditures. And so this, you know, I'm not being very articulate tonight, but what she's done here is allow us to do that because we understand the difference between these types of one-time expenditures and ongoing expenditures. Because if we use parks money, which I think it's $165,000 a year, if we use that money from that levy to something that's going to create an ongoing expense, that's really not going to get us ahead. And I think the survey work that was done around 275th really gives us at least a flavor of what citizens want. And so if we start focusing those one-time revenues on one-time expenditures, I think our citizens will be a lot happier in the long run, and I hope that will, you know, really get, you know, I'm trying to, really struggling, incorporated in a exciting way in our budget. We have a great opportunity here with parks money. And everything from tourism to how we build the services for our citizens. I don't know. It's just really a great opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Lengel. Any other council members that have feedback for Director Mason? Seeing none, I just would like to echo some of the comments that council members have made. Ms. Mason has come in and really, really done a lot of work to reform how our budgeting's done, which is much more in line with what we think that most of us want to see. And to the one-time expenses, that's definitely something we're all working on is trying to get to that point where we can really separate that. And it doesn't necessarily mean that one-time revenues are going to be one-time revenues. There are, for example, our sales tax continues to go up. Of course, you will see the dip in certain points of the economy, but in general, that's revenue that ends up being ongoing rather than one time. So there's things like that that we'll be looking at and trying to make sure that we're identifying that, what is being funded with the real one-time money versus what's being funded with ongoing money. We tried to do that in the last budget. It wasn't 100% successful, but the bottom line of the budget was overwhelmingly one-time revenues for one-time expenses, even if some money looked like it wasn't going that direction. So, you know, thank you to Ms. Mason. She's put a ridiculous amount of time between her and Ms. Andress and Ms. Goodwin in the finance department with the directors and staff pulling this together. And I feel that this is probably one of the most accurate revenue, preliminary revenue forecast the city's had, as well as it's reasonably conservative. We do expect that there's a really good chance that some of those revenue projections will go up before the budget's passed, but we also don't want to count on that until those numbers are real. So, all right, any other final questions or comments? So thank you, Ms. Mason. Moving on to the rest of my report, first off, I'd like to just talk to council a little bit about food trucks. First off, I'd like to just talk to council a little bit about food trucks. As we've seen during the pandemic, we've had some food trucks, trucks come into the city sporadically to provide services. And I know that the communities enjoyed it. That said, I've been having conversations with the chamber about that. You know, the, the city did have a draft policy in front of council a couple of years ago. Council decided at that time not to move forward with it. But as it stands currently, it's not legal for food trucks to be providing service in town without a special event permit, which we have not been providing since the shutdown of the pandemic for obvious public health and safety reasons. We definitely, I think that, well, the chamber, working with the chamber, they pulled some of their brick and mortar restaurants. And I forwarded that feedback to council. And I think there's pretty clear consensus that the businesses really feel like that's actually taking away from them, which I, I strongly agree with. And I wanted to gauge council's feedback because right now we don't have any enforcement mechanisms. So the part of the question for council is, do you want us to bring back a policy amendment which could potentially, although I haven't gotten to talk to our city attorney about it yet, which could potentially be a minor change to our solicitor policy, door-to-door solicitor policy, which does require business license and background checks of those coming in, could be enforced under just the fact that they don't have a business license coming in. But I think if, if they are coming in at all, that we need to make sure that that business is registered in the city and that tax money is coming into the city. So I wanted to kind of hear council's feedback because it could be a simple change. It could be more strict. But then also there's the, the technical side of it is who's going to enforce when it's on the weekends? That leaves the police department. And is that what the council wants? And as far as enforcement in the city and going, spending that time and telling folks that they're not licensed and to leave the city if they're doing those events. So I wanted to just have a brief discussion about that with folks before I go on to the rest of my report. Councilmember McHenry.
So quick question. What are the rules? So you said right now it's not legal for a food truck to come in. But is that, how does that work with somebody who's doing a private event on their property within city limits? Surely they can contract someone as a caterer, but is the issue of someone being parked on city property, like a street or whatever? Is that what the issue is?
I believe so. Without Ms. Thomas here, I can't give the specific code portion of that. But that would definitely part of it. You can hire a caterer to come in, but I think it's the general, it's more about the general public. Private events are one thing. We have food trucks for our special events all the time. Those permits are obtained. But, but we also require every business in the city to have a city business license. So that also brings up another issue is, is the food trucks that we've had in the past, are they simply special event? Or are they also, have they been required to have a business permit within the city of Duval?
Can I do a quick follow-up?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I guess I, I'm just trying to understand. I mean, I, I've seen some pop up around town, but I believe, well, for the most part, it seems like they've been privately contacted saying, hey, we want you to come out. But I know there might have been one other one that just decided to come out and do a route. So I guess I'm just trying to understand if people were just saying, hey, I want this food truck to come out and have them park on their driveway, but they also invite their entire neighborhood or just let people know, hey, they're going to be here. Is that, I mean, that seems like a gray area if they're parked on their private property.
Yeah. And that's, that's exactly why I'm bringing this up is because there's, I think, some questions I don't, I doubt that our attorney is prepared to chime in, but if he is, I will welcome it. But it seems like in general, I mean, if you're on private property, doing business in the city, you're doing business in the city regardless. So I think it, it's a little more complex than it seems. Mr. Kenny?
Well, so I haven't looked at the, the question specifically, but I'm, I'm seeing probably two issues. One of which is whether you need a business license and the second of which, you need some other permit for a special event for the location that you're going to be doing that sort of business. You can't just put up, you know, a food operation on, you know, a residential property necessarily or, or so on. So I think, you know, I can look into those two questions to see. But, you know, the term, you know, business or engaging in business would cover the selling of food from a food truck. So I would presume that they need to have a business license. I didn't quickly, I was just trying to scan right now whether they had, or the city has an exemption for something like that. I don't think it would be any sort of, you know, just casual sale or something like that. So I think that the two issues, they, they'd have to check both boxes properly would be my guess.
So I just want to quickly leave you with my overall opinion on this, which is I'm a little undecided on what you're asking because on one hand, of course, and I'm a fellow business owner too, and I totally appreciate the business community input on this. But what's really missing for me also would be the community's overall input on this as well. So I would like to hear from our citizens, in addition to more business owners, maybe some that aren't chamber members or, you know, however that works. And just get a bigger picture of where the community lies on this issue. I'm not looking to do it quick, so quickly that we don't have time to do a bigger survey for the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Lingle.
I've thought about this a lot. I've been involved in three other chambers. And one was from a, you know, much bigger area. But two were from communities that had economic challenges in their business district. And neither of them, one, food trucks compare, you know, competing with them. So in this situation, I think you've got to have a business license in Duval. Number two, we have a vehicle for food trucks to pour, you know, participate in Duval by having a special events permit. In terms of private property or something that's sponsored, yes, a catered event would be covered, as I understand it, and I've looked at this twice, you know, on private property. You want to hire someone, do a special event, there's no fee for your guests. That's one thing. If you want to do it in any kind of public right of way, you've got to have a special events, you know, permit that's sponsored by somebody. And that produces two things. It produces a way for the city to track sales tax. It also produces a way for the city to monitor whether that activity is appropriate in a city right of way. I'm trying to think of, I've been looking at my list here. I, I think that the main thing is, unfortunately with food trucks, they create an unintended consequence where they compete with struggling business districts. And the other piece that it's not just restaurants, it's also the pedestrian activity that goes along with restaurants. And so I really think food trucks have to have some type of permit from the city. And I really think they need to have a license with the city. I understand that we are in COVID and people want, you know, some other kinds of activities. But that does not negate the fact we have a code that says they have to have, you know, an event permit. So I've already imparted these thoughts to the mayor and I appreciate her, you know, hearing me and thinking about them. And I, I just haven't seen this work really with small business districts that are having difficulty.
Thank you, Councilmember Lingle. Councilmember Hope?
I really appreciate that you sent us the poll from businesses because the only, Councilmember Lingle and I had a constituent reach out to us who wanted a food truck in a neighborhood. And, and this has been multiple times. So if we have all of a sudden food trucks popping up, they're wondering why they can't do the same. So whatever we do, we have to be consistent. It would probably be good to look at the, you know, current code that we have to try and make sure it's consistent. It's my only thought. But I do appreciate you hearing from the businesses. I read every comment on there. So, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridniki.
So I'm an avid food truck fan. And I leave the city all the time to go find some of those food trucks. And I think really, to Councilmember McHenry's point, knowing what your community really wants is important as well. And I guess philosophically as a business owner, I don't look at competition as a problem. I look at it as something that pushes me as a business to be more innovative and to work harder. So I, I never feel threatened by another art school or art program coming into my town. Especially if we're talking about the development of economics expanding in our community. I certainly would want, want that for the community. But I do know with food trucks, the reason we had the whole conversation a few years ago was because of the fact that it was trendy, it was popular, and it was bringing people to various places wherever they park themselves. And that's very true. I mean, I go to Woodville to the Hawaiian Hoppet truck. I have students who drive to Seattle and to, from Buffalo to go get to these places. So, you know, we thought of it as a means to bring businesses in, into our city to drive more economic activity and the idea of that, oh, they're here and they're going to participate in the city and spend more money. So I think before we just throw it all out, we definitely should listen to the business community, but we should also find out what the community really wants regarding the, the trucks. And we're in this unique situation. It's all about innovating and new solutions. And we can set all kinds of rules and regulations, but at this point, I'm really open to innovation to, to make everybody's life better.
Thank you, Councilmember Bridniki. We haven't heard from Councilmember Iyer, Councilmember Napland, or Mayor Portem Remington? Councilmember Napland and then Iyer?
Just be real quick. I, I'm still digesting this issue. And I think when it came up last, council was, you know, unsure as well. And I, I think that that's why, I think we had some outstanding questions and it just, you know, kind of slipped through the cracks. But I'm really unsure and I would like to hear more from the community. And I, I really appreciate what Councilmember Bridniki just shared. And it's important to consider all sides of the issue. So thank you for bringing it up, Mayor Okerlander.
You're welcome. And again, you know, bringing the issue up just to make clear was not to say, don't listen to the community. It's just this is what's come forth and this is the information we have. Trying to figure out where council's at so we can take the right steps forward. Councilmember Iyer?
Yeah, I was trying to recall the conversation, the original conversation a couple of years ago. And I, I can remember just being in a similar place that we, it wasn't prevalent good or prevalent bad, that it was a huge issue. So I think that's what, I guess that's what was difficult then for me and it's difficult for me now in terms of the, with limited resources, trying to craft something. Cause I would, it would seem, I mean, sometimes the government you settle with gray areas. And I mean, I think the question I ask is, do we have sufficient things in place if there's a chronic issue that it could be addressed? And I think it seems as though there's, it's likely that, I mean, maybe that's something, I, I guess that would be more of something I'd be interested in addressing versus, you know, I haven't noticed any food trucks coming through town, the one-off, you know, stopping on a dime and creating a new policy for the, for the, you know, few scofflaws that come through town, you know, on one day. I mean, maybe it's really chronic. I don't know. But I, I haven't seen them or, or partaken. But I do also appreciate Councilmember Bridniki's point in terms of, you know, that it's a pretty cool thing if, if it's done right. And I think, I guess it's just, it's, it's a lot of effort to go either way. And I think in the short, in the near term, my support would be kind of based on like, what's the immediate problem? Is there, is there a smaller fix that needs to be made to get us to a point where possibly, you know, that some more legwork can be done? I think that's where we left the last one was it just is a lot of work involved in the process and communicating with this, with the citizens. So I, I also agree that that's something that we need to do. So I guess my support would be generally for small effort in the interim, short of going back to that original policy and being like, hey, you know, can we, is this something that we want to flush out? So. So it wasn't that short. So.
That's okay. Thank you, Councilmember Iyer. Mayor Portem Remington?
I had to look up scofflaw to begin with to make sure I understood how it related. And it relates very well, by the way, Google. I think it's important for our city to have a policy ordinance on food trucks. They're very popular. You know, we've got mobile vendors, ice cream trucks. I think more recently we've had a truck going through the neighborhoods with pastries, which sounds like it's very popular. I think Daniel's right. You know, we need to make sure that they have a business license, what locations, if any, they would be allowed. And certainly even parking. We do have, one of our brick and mortar stores has their own food truck, which is a huge business for them, mostly in the city of Seattle, but special events throughout the King County. So I think it's important. I, I just don't think it's a huge priority right now. We have budget and a lot of other things. So it's not something that I would expect to be brought up right away. I really do appreciate the comments from our business community. This is a tough time and they're just trying to make ends meet. And having somebody roll into town, park and potentially take even some of their revenue, that's a big deal. And so I, I think looking into the future, it'd be important for us to develop a policy. It also allows us to create some enforcement for whether it's PD or one of our other departments to be able to tell them it's time to move on or to make sure they're, they're regulated and doing things appropriately. And, you know, they have all their health, required health certificates. So with all that, again, I, I think it's important. I would encourage us to look at a policy. I just don't think it's a huge priority today. And maybe something we could look at even next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Seems like we're kind of all stuck in the middle on this. And so I'm, I'll have some conversations with our attorney and please keep been looking at our code. And if we need to bring something further discussion forward, we will. But to Mayor Portem Remington's point, this is one of those things where it's kind of the last, on the bottom of your list of things to do when we're looking at budget and CARES Act funding and everything else. So thank you all. Much appreciated. So continuing on with my report, this morning we had the Soqami Valley Association, Soqami Valley Governments Association Mayor's meeting. Our representatives from the fifth Legislative District, Representative Callan, Representative Ramos and Senator Mullet joined us. And there was a lot of discussion about what's going to happen with special session. As we continue to hear, it looks like it's not going to be until after probably late November, if there's one at all. Our representatives in the fifth are working, you know, Representative Ramos on the transportation side. They're expecting potentially another transportation package specifically to fix 18, Highway 18, Highway two, and the latest emergency of the West Seattle Bridge. The mayor carnation and I did discuss with them again, that the need for a Highway 203 corridor study to guide future changes to transportation planning. Since we do know for a fact with our recent study that more than 75% of our traffic through the city of Duval comes from outside of Duval on any given workday, which is very, very significant to not have that being factored into some of the transportation planning. They're also going to be working pretty extensively on public safety reform. I have been hearing from other agencies that are dealing with more of the protests and riots that those, that their officers are starting to experience some significant PTSD-like symptoms. And so one of the questions I had for them is in addition to the reform, is there going to be a focus on sort of that health and wellness for the officers? Because that definitely is a major contributing factor when things go wrong in police departments. Also behavioral health, they're working on that as we've seen. And I heard today from another mayor. The mental health situation around the region, and I think around the country is getting worse. Heard some very sad stories today about what's going on with one mayor's business and his Heard some very sad stories today about what's going on with one mayor's business and his employees. And it's just heartbreaking. And I think what we've recognized throughout the last year, in particular with our teen suicide endemic, is that we just don't have enough behavioral health providers, don't have enough insurance coverage, and certainly need to find a way to make that change. So that was part of the discussion at the mayor's meeting this morning. For lunch, we had the North End Mayor's meeting. Congresswoman Del Benny did join us for that meeting, a good chunk of it. One of the big issues with the House package that was passed, the HEROES Act that was passed a few months ago, is that the White House does not want any of that money to go to the local governments, which is a huge sticking point between the chambers. We're not sure where that's going to go, but as a result of the inaction in the Senate and the White House, we still don't have, the unemployment security payments have dried up, there's a large eviction crisis, and areas with high unemployment are really getting hit hard right now with that additional double whammy of not being able to get additional assistance. Great news today, actually, it came in late yesterday, but then I've got numbers today, is that for those that haven't heard, the governor is planning to distribute an additional well over $100 million to local governments and CARES Act funding and extend the deadline for using the money till December 1st. I got feedback from the Executive Director of the Association of Washington Cities late this afternoon that preliminary numbers put us at $117,000 additional dollars for CARES Act funding, which could make a huge impact for our businesses and nonprofits. Moving on to the grant process, I really want to thank Councilmember Lengel for participating in that and helping prioritize and make decisions on the small business grants. Pretty much every, most of the businesses that applied were awarded. There were a couple that did not qualify, and coupled with the amounts that we were able to distribute, wouldn't have made an impact. So we decided to give a little more to those that would would have a bigger impact. Councilmember Lengel, did you want to add anything to that part?
Yeah, I just want to, ooh, do I have everything video? There you go. I thought it was a really good process. I really appreciated our conversation. It was very consistent in our view of local interests. But the fact is that so many of these businesses had more than enough justification for a full grant award. I mean, if we had had more funds to allocate, I think we would have done it. I mean, we had, we had, you know, we had $65,000 in, you know, the CARES money. And then we had, I think it was $11,900 in the King County money. And I just looked at the, at the check register there, and we've actually dispersed $55,000. So, you know, we have a little more to disperse, but I don't, I don't want to use the word sad, because that's not a good word. But it really was very, I don't know if I would use the word, impressive, not in a positive sense, but impressive in terms of information that so many businesses had more than enough documentation. And and the really difficult thing is, it's likely that's going to continue. Because when you see a really well-respected business that is vibrant, that everyone in the community loves, have almost a 44% decrease in revenue, that's hard. It's really hard to analyze. And this is all backed up by things like, you know, revenue data, and it's not arbitrary information, it's very objective. So it was a good process, it was a meaningful process.
Thank you. And again, I really appreciate that participation. I was thinking it would take an hour, and I think we took, what, three hours? But we got it all done with some great conversation. So with this additional $117,000, we had had the second round of going out to our previous human services grantees, and we've got the numbers back. Ms. Mason, I cannot remember exactly what it was you sent the number today, or maybe it was Ms. James. I believe we had about $26,000 to $30,000 in requests. There was one agency that literally only requested $1,000, and I had to remind them that this also goes for past expenses that are COVID-related. And we'll be working on getting those, that awarded and that money out, and we may have additional. So then what we'll need to make as a council decision is, on the legislative side, is if we do not distribute all that human services funding, what are, what do folks want the next steps to be? And then with this additional $117,000, my gut instinct is that if we've covered our city expenses, that we should probably probably do another round of business grant funding and expand and just expand the criteria a bit, as well as expand the maximum dollar amount, now that we've been through one round of grant funding, and also allow for those that have already received CARES Act funding through us to be eligible again. Because there's definitely, to Councilmember Lengel's point, some businesses that you could see that were much more deeply affected. And if they could have additional grant funding that's not repayable, it could make a significant difference in their long-term viability through the crisis. So that's what we're thinking about. We'll definitely need to bring something forth to the council at the next meeting. Hopefully, we'll get final award amounts and the deadlines. And what I'm not clear on at this point is if the overall deadline for using the CARES Act funding is extended to December 1st, because if it is, that will help our human service agencies and agencies and our businesses, or if it's just the new round of funding. So once we get those answers, we'll get some information out to council and hopefully be able to move through them pretty quickly with another round of grant funding, if folks decide to go that route. Councilmember Lengel?
Yeah, I think you make some really good points. I don't think that the social services folks really understand what we're asking them to do, which maybe we, you know, maybe we need to talk to them a little bit more. But as far as the business community goes, I, I looked at their revenue reductions. We could easily provide more to them. I mean, as I, you know, I mentioned, 43%, 44%, that, I won't mention the business, but it's one of the most popular businesses in downtown Duval. And we didn't even get into some of the other ones. That's just one. And so definitely the need is there. And I think the human services people, I've talked to them a couple of folks, I mean, I don't think they quite understand what we're asking them to do. So maybe there needs to be a little more outreach there. But it's pretty clear in the business community. I would say definitely a second round.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Iyer, and then Councilmember McHenry?
It's been a little while now. Did we ever discuss direct utility relief?
Yeah.
No, I have talked to three neighbors that are unemployed, Boeing and some different companies. And I think it could be a potential good idea. Because I think there's definitely more and more unemployed folks in town. So.
Thank you. We did discuss that internally. And Director Mason, correct me if I'm wrong, part of that discussion surrounded, you know, the actual distribution of that, and do we have capacity internally, which we don't really have capacity internally? And we have a human services agencies within the city, operating within the city such as Hope Link, that do provide specifically that assistance and have been providing it to our community. We can look at it again, but the challenge, as far as the direct dispersment, really comes down to staff capacity. And there was a lot of, when you start to get down to those smaller amounts, I don't know that we have the ability to process all of those applications, even though it's something that we would definitely want to do. So Ms. Mason, did you want to chime in?
No, I think with the utility payments, this one thing we can't do is replace our own revenue directly. But if we did it through an agency like Hope Link, we could get the payments that way. So I think that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. I just, hopefully, we can figure out a way to communicate those mechanisms as best as possible, and how that works through an agency like Hope Link. And also, just in some of these folks that might not be able to demonstrate that their annual income has decreased because they might have been making plenty of money yesterday. And so I'm not sure how the process works. So I guess it'd just be a good thing to revisit, because like I said, it's it's something that's, there are unemployed folks in town.
And Councilmember Iyer, I would be happy, I think both Ms. Mason and I would be happy to talk to those people individually, because that can help us determine, it's, one of the things that that can help us determine is if, if Hope Link or an agency like that has granted the funds, we might be able to establish different criteria for which they're eligible for the funds than what the agency typically operates on. So it would be great if you can have those folks reach out to me and Ms. Mason, so that we can, within the next few days, so that we can look at those options and establish some guidelines, if we can make that happen. Councilmember Napland?
I just wanted to express my support for that effort. Just if you think about it, they might not qualify under normal income levels, just like you both mentioned. So, you know, but they, unless, you know, their income is enough to support a, you know, a more expensive house, and yet now they don't have as much income, but the bills are still coming in. I think it's just a different, it's a different scenario than just a regular low-income person who might seek out Hope Link for help. So any way that we can direct them to, I think that's the only avenue of doing it, and then making some kind of special parameters related to COVID and a sudden drop of income, like a job. So anyway, I'm fully in support of that. And also just looking at our policy for low income, just our regular policy, is definitely more limited with a much lower discount than other cities that I've looked at. And so long-term, I would like to look at that going forward, looking at our policy and just the income limits and the amount of discount just is, you know, out, not, not sufficient, in my opinion. It'd be very, almost a waste of time for someone to jump through all those hoops for such a small discount. Oh, and the other thing I just wanted to mention super fast is, supporting our businesses and getting them through this crisis is so important, and it really relates to our ability to then fund human services. If we lose our businesses and we lose that revenue, we're going to be in a worse shape to be able to support our human services agencies. So it all is interconnected.
Yeah.
So anyway, thank you for everything you've done on that.
Councilmember Bridniki and McHenry, and then Councilmember Lengel again?
So I just want to thank you for doing what you can for small businesses. And, you know, I'm a small business, and I'll tell you, 38% reduction, I can still pay my workers, but I've accepted the fact I will not get paid for an entire year. And I'm sure I'm not alone, I'm sure there's a lot of people like that. And I have clients, and everybody's waiting. The only problem is, as a business, like so many businesses, we cannot open our business up. That's the problem. So I have a waitlist of folks, they're all waiting, they want to start coming to class and all that, but the money is sitting out there and the business is there, we just can't have access to at this point. And so for what little you can do for anybody in this town, that would be great.
Thank you. Councilmember McHenry?
Oh yeah, just talking about the business grants, I hope we can do another round, because I mean, we're just seeing the tip of the iceberg with this issue, because many of these small businesses are single owners. And they're burning the candle at both ends right now, but quite simply put, they can't make up what they've lost, because they're only one person. And for those who do have employees, if they've been able to keep them, I mean, it's just the same issue. They can only work so much, they only have a set number of employees that can work. So it's just for those who were lucky enough to even have a rainy day fund, because that's the business we're in, and owning a business is just crazy. That's gone now, and I'm just thinking ahead to any other potential, just everyday things that can happen. An appliance goes out, or something happens. So I just, whatever amount of rounds we can do, whatever becomes available, we need to do it, because we're not even close to being out of the woods with this.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lengel?
Point number one. Immediately, what comes to mind is one applicant who's literally in forbearance in their mortgage. That's how tight their life situation is. You know, on the utility fund, I spent some time trying to understand more about Hope Link, and they definitely have a utility assistance fund delivery system. The, I'm not going to describe it as a difficulty, but a nuance is they really are oriented to folks that have, or even in more extreme means than maybe some of our folks. So I think there is some criteria crafting that we maybe want to do with them, because these are, these are federal funds, and they have a unique characteristic compared to any other local funds. And, and hopefully may not be as, you know, familiar with that. So worth exploring, absolutely. On human services, and the point about it continuing, and this goes to something else, I sort of had my, my list today, which is that COVID is not going to end this year, at least in my belief. It's going to go on for a while, it really is our new normal. And we, I think fully serve our constituents, we really need to think about what the new normal means. And that, we know that there's certain things we pass that expire at the end of this year. For example, we are pretty sure that even if there's a vaccine, it's not going to be widely commercially available, at least with full FDA and NIH approval, for a while. So we need to really spend some time, I think, rethinking about what emergency means to us, and what revisions maybe to our original resolutions we need to take, so that our community is taken care of. And I've thought about this a lot, and I don't know what all the answers are to that. We really haven't had council time to talk about it. But it's, it's, it's going to happen, and it's going to happen in the next quarter. So we've got to figure this part out.
Yeah, thank you. We haven't heard from Councilmember Hoag or Mayor Portem Remington. Did you have anything to add? Councilmember Hoag?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just excited to hear, Mayor, that there was additional money available. There's a lot of people that, I think as Matt said, both individuals and businesses that are hurting. And as those are made available to us, the city, nice to be able to get those out as quickly as we can to those. I do like the idea of doing something with utilities, because there's a lot of families that that would make a big difference. How we do that, I like the idea of Hope Link, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, so moving on in my report, the Sound, for folks that haven't signed up, the Sound Cities Association's first virtual networking event is tomorrow night. Attorney General Bob Ferguson will be joining, and there will also be breakout rooms that SCA will divide up the people that are attending to have conversations with guided questions to really kind of facilitate that networking that we haven't been able to have the last six months. It is free, so if you are free from 5:30 to 7:30 tomorrow night, please do attend. I'm sure there'll be great conversation and good information from the Attorney General as well. Lastly, well, actually, the, one more thing, the Association of Washington City's Legislative Committee is meeting next week. And I think as folks that are serving on regional committees know, things are starting to ramp up. things are starting to ramp up again now that the August break is over. So there will be a lot more reporting coming forth. I did want to let folks know that I've been accepted to be on the Association of Washington City's Broadband Committee. This is a loosely knit committee of staff and elected officials at this point. And part of their purpose is to, you know, look at what everybody's doing on the survey side, but start to bring attention to not just the last mile of internet, but the underserved areas. We had, I didn't have time to pull up the information from the report that we had from NOAA NET. But I hope to have that ready for the next council meeting to share with you some of those details on what they're working on. NOAA NET does actually have Duval on the list, but I wasn't able to gather the details in the meeting time that we had. So this is positive. I think as I've reported before, Sound Cities and Association of Washington City are starting to address this issue much more in depth. And frankly, the pandemic has really brought this issue to light. I can't tell you, I cannot run into anyone from any city that is not having issues with their internet right now. So it's a systemic regional issue and like more likely nationwide. And the ultimate goal is to get more local control over our access and our service levels. So I'll keep you guys updated as that moves along. And as we previously discussed, this is one of those items we want to have on our legislative agenda when we start developing that. And, you know, thanks to Councilmember Napland for doing that extra reach out to King County. This is going to be a complex issue, just like transportation. It's going to take as many hands on deck getting information and participating in in activities as possible to move it along. But it's also going to be a long term statewide effort because nothing's going to happen overnight. It's going to take some significant time to make progress. But it's good work and it needs to get done. I think as we, those of us that had school online today, multiple children in a house while trying to work and Zoom and do meetings at the same time was a bit of a challenge. But I think that's again, part of that new normal and adjusting how we operate and do business and what we advocate for as a city. So with that, that's the end of my report. Thank you for the unscheduled discussions. We didn't have any council reports tonight, but we do have, do we have any council committee reports?
I believe Councilmember Lengel said she wanted to speak under council report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, actually I've already conveyed my comments to our Chair Councilmember Hoag.
Councilmember Hoag?
Okay. So we did have a meeting, the Finance Administration Committee had a meeting on August 28th. And it was to discuss the procurement policy. Director Mason, Director Thomas, Councilmember Lengel and Councilmember Napland and myself were there. So we started working on section nine, which is the just in categories, which includes materials, supplies, equipment, services, professional services, general services, technology, public works. And what we kind of came to figure out is that this particular portion of the policy is pretty detailed and took us over two hours, I believe. So we really, the Councilmember Lengel and Councilmember Napland and I thought it would be best if we met separately to independently work on this policy and then come back to staff and then bring it to a Cal meeting. So we also dug deep into the rest of policy that discusses piggybacking and sole source. We also worked on the requirements behind project costs. And so it's just, it's it's a pretty, it's a big lift, I feel. So that's just our plan is to meet and go through the policy and then bring it back to staff. So I don't know if you had anything to add.
Councilmember Lengel?
Yeah, I think that the interaction with staff around this has been really good. We are taking this additional step because we are very aware that the the demands on them right now is pretty significant. And they've put forward a number of thoughts and changes. And so we're building off of what staff has already provided us. It's, we're not operating in any kind of vacuum. And we are in particular looking at how can we evaluate, document and evaluate total development cost of projects. And the purpose of this is to have a better understanding of council when additional funds will be possibly needed to complete a project. And right now we have three pending grant requests. I don't have them all in front of me. One is for $400,000. I think one is a little less than $200,000. And we want to be sure that as we budget into 2122 that we have already thought through what those projects might need to complete and what buckets of funds those would come from. And that drives us towards really understanding total development costs compared to sources and uses. And when I say use sources, I mean, not just the grant source, but any other sources within the city that might be necessary to complete a good quality project. So we're we're doing a bit of thinking about that. We don't assume that other jurisdictions are necessarily thinking about it in that type of comprehensive way, but then we don't have the tax base that a lot of other jurisdictions have. So this is consistent with our budgeting and oversight responsibility and it's not meant to curtail projects. It's mostly focused on understanding them, understanding what it will cost to do the complete project and how we will finance those projects. And to that end, we are actually thinking that a form that would accompany an agenda bill would create a way the council consistently look at the comprehensive cost of a specific project.
Thank you. I do like the idea of a form. We've been trying to, as you know, we've been trying to institute more of those things over the last few years of changes to the agenda bills and what have you. And anything we can do to simplify, information is always good. So thank you, Councilmember Lengel. All right, moving on, we do not have any presentations this evening. But we do have a public hearing on the resolution for the 2020 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. And so with that, I will virtual gavel and open the public hearing and let Mr. Davis from Community Development take it away.
In here. All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Troy Davis. I'm Senior Planner with the Planning Department. And tonight's public hearing is on the proposed 2020 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. For the record, planning staff would like to formally enter Exhibits 1 through 21 as enumerated into the staff report into the formal hearing record. So a little bit of background, comprehensive plan can only be run once a year. So cities like the city of Duval has a docket process put in place to allow applicants, including the city, to pose amendments to the city's comprehensive plan collectively. And during that window, anyone could submit an application. And that way we can take all proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendments into consideration at the same time. So the 2020 application window ran from August 2nd, 2019 to September 16th, 2019. And during that time, we only had five applications that were all city initiated. The applications were evaluated to make sure that they meet the criteria listed in DMC 1472030. And after they were evaluated, they went to the Planning Commission in November. The Planning Commission recommended that all of the five applications be included on the final 2020 docket for consideration. And on December 3rd of 2019, the City Council established the final 2020 docket. So inclusion of an application is on the docket is not automatic approval. It just provides staff with the direction to go ahead and continue to process those applications during the year. So final action on the proposed amendments are usually taken in late summer or fall, which leads us to where we're at today. The first proposed amendment moving forward for council action is the proposed amendment CPA 20-001. This is a proposed amendment to the city's future land use map, which would change a single city owned parcel from public facilities to residential eight units per acre. This is actually a carryover from the city's 2018 and 2019 dockets. It's a city initiated amendment because the property was under consideration by the council for surplusing. And they changed in the land use designation and concurrent reason would help make the property more lucrative for outside buyers for public or private entities as opposed to public entities. And so this property is located on, it's as known as the rec center. And it's a very small lot, 6,000 square feet. It's currently developed, of course, with a historic building that was built in the 30s. Looks like it has a sports court and some office space. It's been rented out by the city in the past, but I believe is currently unoccupied. Neighboring uses include the fire station to the west, the school district to the south, and single family residential units to the east and north. So at the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on August 26th, the planning commission recommended that the City Council deny this application. That would change the future land use map and zoning map from public facilities to residential units per acre. And I'll just mention kind of as a side note, that was a unanimous decision on this proposed amendment. The second proposed amendment CPA 20-002 is also a city initiated amendment. And this was to redesignate two properties located on the southwest corner of Northeast 243rd Place and Third Avenue Northeast from residential 20 units per acre to 12 units per acre. So this, these two parcels were unique in that they had a high number of exceptional trees as well as significant trees. And as you know, under our, under the city's tree protection ordinance, exceptional trees have an additional layer of protection. And so require additional, a very narrowly tailored justification for removal. So this has created some difficulty in proposals in meeting the minimum density requirements of that zone, just 16 units per acre and retaining protected exceptional trees. So this kind of head butting between two competing policies created a situation where the city felt that possibly down some of these two are lower density might make the property more suitable for development and preserving exceptional trees to the greatest degree possible. Planning staff, however, in 2020 did not have time to further process and analyze this proposed amendment. Some of the property characteristics of these two parcels are side by side. They total almost four acres collectively. One is heavily forested, the other is partially forested and has an existing single family residential unit on it. Properties in the vicinity are zoned R12 to the south, M12, and to the east are eight. So the planning commission recommendation on their regularly scheduled August 26th, 2020 meeting was the to recommend that the City Council deny this proposed amendment that would change the future land use map and official zoning map from residential 20 units per acre to residential 12 units per acre. And let me correct something that I stated earlier. Sorry, I got the two amendments. So this proposed amendment was unanimously recommended for denial by the Planning Commission. It was CPA 20-001. That was a or to one recommendation to deny this reason. So I apologize for the error. And that concludes planning's presentation.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any public comments this evening? Clerk, were there any submitted written public comments for this hearing?
No, and I'm in the process of allowing our attendees to speak. If they would like to do so, they can unmute themselves now.
All right. Anyone on the phone that would like to provide public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and we will move on to new business agenda bill 20-75A, Resolution 2020 Comprehensive Plan Amendments for discussion and or decision. And I will not make Mr. Davis go through the same presentation again, but this is the opportunity to ask questions and provide feedback. And if council is still inclined to suspend the rules and vote on the comp plan amendments this evening or postpone to another meeting. So with that, do we have any feedback or comments from council on this? Councilmember Lengel?
I guess this is more of a question. The Planning Commission's decision to keep it R20, how did that interrelate with the tree protection ordinance? There's an obvious challenge there and I guess I'd like more information.
So sorry, I'm hoping I understand correctly. So the planning commission recommended to deny that proposal. And in our discussions with the planning commission before, probably at least a year ago or or more, if I can remember that far back, we've had, we've discussed with them, we were working with, I believe, Main Street Property Group that owns the property that was looking at developing it. And our discussions with the planning commission were that, you know, this proposal, this site had a high number of exceptional trees because they did submit a report. So we have that documentation for that easterly property on file that there was a high number of exceptional trees. And so we had worked with the applicant to try and come up with this, the best case scenario, you know, for preserving the highest number of exceptional trees as well as being able to meet minimum density. And it was just hard in part because there were other constraints to, like in our R20 zone, you can only go up to three stories. You know, which prevents a certain amount of agglomeration, or whatever you call it, from happening. And as well as parking requirements too, that would just eat up so much land. It was just difficult at the R20 zoning to really preserve any significant amount of exceptional trees that are on that property. So in discussions with the planning commission, we, you know, we relayed this concern that, you know, we wouldn't be able to really fully implement the city's tree protection policy to the degree that the City Council may be expecting from staff. And so with that concern, we had hoped, you know, that maybe taking a different approach to these properties would help us attain a greater degree of exceptional tree preservation.
So I, to follow up on that, has there, I'm presuming, because of the way planning works, that you've done some analysis to see what's the middle ground might be with this. And you know, we, the the purpose of the exceptional tree and the tree ordinance certainly is to preserve the tree canopy. But there must be, I would assume there's some recommendation that could be developed that would allow the site to be developed and at the same time preserve trees. But if we don't have a chance to look at that, how do we know what which is the really, what the compromise point might be to make a decision around? I mean, if they're they're saying R20 or nothing, then it seems like the answer is nothing. And the 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 financial reality of the city is that if we develop land within the city, And the financial reality of the city is that if we develop land within the city, what that allows us to do is recapture financial investments we have already made to meet our comprehensive plan objectives. And if something isn't working, I'm not suggesting a wholesale revamping of the zoning code or the tree ordinance, but it seems like we're kind of in a, I don't want to say checkmate, but we're certainly in a check position from a chess perspective, and we don't have a way to make the whole thing work. So, I guess that's what I'm trying to bring about is, we want the land in the city to be appropriately developed, and we want to do that as much as possible and preserve our trees, but this seems to be, it seems to be an anomaly almost, where it just doesn't work.
Right, yeah. This is a very unique situation. It happens to be one of the last, you know, really heavily forested parcels, you know, in city limits, and it just so happened that they had a high number of exceptional trees. And part of that problem was the trees were, the exceptional trees were pretty much, relatively speaking, evenly spread out across the parcel, which made it even more difficult because it wasn't just saying, hey, let's just set aside this part of the parcel, you know, and build over here. It was where do we build on the parcel because they're spread out, you know, relatively even? So, I mean, technically, if somebody came in, you know, today or tomorrow with an application, you know, to develop it at the R20, we would have to accept it and process it and come up with a compromise. But we figured we may, since we don't have an application in, may take the opportunity to look at the possibility of downzoning the property as a potential solution, you know, to this intersection of competing code requirements and take a look at that. But that was kind of where we were at with that. But unfortunately, this past year, you know, we just didn't have the time to take a deeper dive into that. And the unfortunate part about it, too, is not hearing more feedback from the property owners. You know, we did a little outreach initially, but kind of the unfortunate part was that there wasn't engagement like we had hoped. So, we didn't really get a feel back to what the property owners thought as far as, you know, whether they were okay with it or what their feelings were, so.
Councilmember Napland?
I have a couple of questions. And when I remember approving the docket, there were several other items, and I think we even saw them recently, and mostly they are, I think, text amendments to different pieces of the comprehensive plan to update for CIP changes. And I don't see those anymore. Did we change something about the process? Because what was approved for the docket included all of those, and now all I'm seeing are these two pieces that we're rejecting. So, does that mean we have no docket? Did those go away? And then the other thing is, I do recall, we discussed carrying over this item, the R20 parcel, and contemplating, you know, other possibilities such as an R8 or something more suitable for a heavily treed parcel. And, yeah, I'm hearing the rejection. Is that just the technical name, but doesn't preclude us carrying it over? I'm not really sure how that works, so maybe you can answer those two questions.
Yeah, no, those are great, great questions. So, like last year, we only bring forward the amendments that materialize. So, the three other applications that we had on the docket were placeholders, basically, for public works, potential items, but those applications never materialized into an actual amendment. Even though the future land use map amendments naturally materialized as a proposed amendment because they're map amendments, so even though we didn't process, say, the R20 redesign or redesignation to R12 application, it was still a material amendment that was on the docket. So, we moved those items, proposed amendments that have actually materialized forward for the council to consider. As far as the docket itself, with the city council approving that, you know, that's basically just setting the stage that if we are going to move anything forward, those are the only items that can move forward in that calendar year for consideration. So, we only bring forward the items that materialized as far as an actual specific amendment goes. With regards to the CPA 20-002, which is the rezon, the reason why we were proposing a rejection of this application was because if we are going to evaluate the property, another designation, say, R8 or R8 or R12, we can't, we feel it's better to apply again. So, the object was to submit another application during this docket cycle that specifically said, hey, we're going to look at this as being R8 or R12. Because if we carried over the proposed amendment as it is in 2020, I think it would be hard for us to justify changing the proposal, you know, as part of the evaluation. So, what we wanted to do was get us a clean slate saying, hey, this is specifically what we're doing, so the process is fair.
Thank you. Councilmember Bidnicki?
In regards to the R20 and the denial of that, the landowner hasn't really said anything. I'm fine with the denial of that on the docket, but I do want to say that I'm also fine with the Rec Center proposal because when we did look at that as far as, you know, whether we put it through for the current use or change it, we still would get the same value out of the property. So, I'm fine with keeping it as is, and, I mean, the goal is eventually a settlement, so I don't want to add more work to that process.
Mayor Portem Remington, you're unmuted. Did you have something to add?
Well, it was probably more of a question, not immediate question for Daniel, but something to think about. You know, I've talked to a few citizens that bought property and expected to be able to sell it and build to a builder and make some money, and then they looked at our tree ordinance and realized they couldn't sell it for what they would like, even with current zoning because of the requirement. So, you know, the sad part here, and the question, I guess I would be asking a legal review at some point, is we passed ordinance to save trees, but we also have homeowners who said, you know, you've basically taken my property without any compensation. So, I think it's a legitimate question. It's one that's come up in the past, many cities have had to answer. We're over a year now with our updated tree ordinance. I know we were going to take another look at it to try to understand, is it working okay? Are there adjustments that need to be made? So, I think we still need to take a look at that. You know, the good news with our tree ordinance is we're trying to save trees, which is what the majority of our citizens want. Unfortunately, a majority of the citizens don't happen to own those trees on somebody else's property. So, you know, the question I think we need to be looking at here, especially as we look at any adjustment to that tree ordinance, where do we stand legally? You know, we're certainly taking away a property owner's ability to sell their property for maybe a higher value. The trade-off is our citizens are getting to live in a town that retains more of its trees. Both those I support, but they run into a conflict like this where somebody may have a project. And so, I just want to highlight that conflict. I don't have an answer tonight and don't necessarily expect Daniel to say here's a definitive answer with our code, but it's one I think we need to take a look at as council and try to figure out where we stand on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lingle?
Just a couple of points. If someone invests in land for the purposes of future development, based on experience, that's one of the most high-risk decisions you can make. That said, you know, I don't know that a tree ordinance, which is designed to protect the environment, is a taking under state statute. I think that the key here is finding a way, a balance to make some of these things work. And it's based on what Troy has said, there really hasn't been the opportunity to do that type of analysis. And that's what I would be looking for, and maybe the amendment to the comprehensive plan right now is that it's a good thing that we don't make that amendment now, but we figure out a way to do this type of work. And I, as a citizen, I watched the tree ordinance, you know, go through process. It was a very thoughtful, deliberate process with lots of opportunity for citizen involvement, so I don't feel like citizens were cut out of that process. Sometimes really good intent needs to be massaged a little bit, and maybe that's the situation with the tree ordinance. And so, I guess what I would say here is, I would support the staff recommendation on the comprehensive plan change right now, and I think we've got to figure out a way to make this odd, not just this situation, but these odd situations work. And, you know, maybe that means going back and modifying the tree ordinance. I would defer to staff on that for alternatives, but the bottom line is, we should rather have development work within the city limits than go amok around us. And we have to be careful with the tree ordinance, that it doesn't open up a sort of a Pandora's box around other things around Duval if we're going to protect the character. You know, it's a tough balance, and I'm hopefully articulating that.
Mayor Mike Remington?
Great. Go ahead, Mayor Portem.
Well, it sounds like, I thought we had a three-touch on this, but, you know, unless there's other comments, I'm prepared to recommend that we suspend our three-touch rule, and if council approves that, I would then recommend that we approve the resolution. So, I'll move that we suspend our three-touch rule on this topic.
Do we have a second? Councilmember Lingle?
I'll make a motion to...
Second? Okay, so we have a first and a second on suspending the rules. Any discussion by council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Mayor Portem?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I move that council approve agenda bill 20-75A, resolution 2020, comprehensive plan amendments, which basically has been recommended by planning commission that we not move forward, which means we wouldn't have any changes by approving this amendment.
Second? We have a first and a second. Mayor Portem, and then councilmember Napland. Any further discussion by council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you, and that's exactly why we have the planning commission and pride recommendations to the legislative body, so thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, agenda bill 20-70B, contract for 275th Complete Streets Project for discussion and/or decision, Mr. Lenishewski.
Good evening, council, citizens, mayor, Steve Lenishewski, Pub Works, and I think Daniel may be our only remaining staffer. Oh, no, Dana and Jody, sorry. So, what you have before you is a culmination of many, many months of hopeful resolution and costs for the 275th Complete Streets Project that are appetizing enough to make consideration on. You are aware, we did put out a survey with the help of councilmember McHenry. We have had positive feedback on the survey itself. Obviously, people said what they felt, which was great to read. Duly noting the, taking a phrase out of Ross, some overwhelming support for certain items. The project itself, my opinion, seemed to have solid support, and then the alternates within it, rapid flushing beacons is over 80%. The additional lighting at all intersections on both ends of the project, overwhelming support over 80%, and then limited support for activity stations on this stretch of road. However, we tried to craft some of the questions to see if people liked them in general, and I think there was overwhelming support. I think it was 65%. We thought activity stations are better suited in active and park areas, which is great. A little bit of a side note, we do have new activity stations installed at Duval Village on that project's behalf, which is city area. All right, it's on the trails down to the main trail of the King County and the Duval Trail, so we will have opportunity to see how and if people enjoy those and maybe receive comments in the future. But with that said, we are pleased to present Iron Creek Construction, their low bid, and all alternates were the overall low. And as I mentioned, we do recommend that we provide the base bid plus alternates one and three relative to kind of discussion at council as well as the response from the community. I think with that said, I'm sure we'll have questions from the council, so I don't know that I need to belabor any other items on this other than maybe open it up for some questions and discussion.
Great.
Councilmember Remington, if you'd like to take the reins, I'll leave it to you.
We have Mayor Portem Remington, and then councilmember McHenry did raise her hand as well. Councilmember, or Mayor Portem, you're unmute.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor, if you want to run the discussion, that would be fine. We just wanted to be able to see if there were any additional questions or comments on it. For me personally, I like this project. We've had a lot of discussion. There have been concerns. I really wanted to thank councilmember McHenry for finding, taking this opportunity to get citizen feedback. Many of the citizens I talked to were really appreciative of that. I'd like to find us doing that more in the future. Polls are really difficult to get perfect, the way you ask questions. Certainly, some folks wanted more information about the cost of the overall project, but at the end of the day, this is an incredible project, improve 275th, provide a sidewalk to improve safety at the intersection. Personally, I support option one and two, or I'm sorry, option one and three. I think getting streetlights in there to help light that sidewalk and that side of the street will improve safety on many, not just for pedestrians, but for traffic as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Councilmember McHenry, and then councilmember Lingle?
I just want to thank Director Lenishewski for jumping in so quick and getting out an awesome survey and kind of looking at all that data, and the trends were really interesting. Look at the comments are super interesting as well. I did want a little clarification, if you could. I know a lot of the homeowners there had some concerns with their fences backing up to all the vegetation. So, based on what we're doing now, I just want to clarify, because I think originally there was going to be a little more scaling of the land in there. So, is it kind of a hard stop where the power poles are, that the landscaping would be on the sidewalk side, and we're not going to really touch the stuff that backs up to the fences now? Because I know a lot of it got torn down, so I just want to clarify that one point for people who might be listening.
Sure. The intent is to stay within the 30-foot area. We obviously go out around the big maple tree, so that is where we calculate the biggest reach into the space of 30 feet. We have some other spots along the way, but again, realistically, curb line, landscape strip, sidewalk, and then the plans show just hydro seating on the back edge where there isn't landscaping, and there really is only landscaping in areas that are mitigating the impact of the homeowner. So, if we don't do the park space or play, what we're calling activity stations, we wouldn't landscape that area. Obviously, street trees would be there throughout the project unless we were omitting them because of other saved trees. We would have landscaping around the bump out, and that would be it. So, that would be a couple rows of mowing with, you know, a larger-scale machine and reeding. and reed eating once in a while, but certainly not going any further than we, I guess, would impact at this point.
So is it safe to say that inevitably we know the blackberries come back? We're only going to maintain that edge along however many feet that is to the right of the sidewalk? Or I guess into the fence side of the sidewalk? Is that what you're, would that?
Twenty feet. The guys like to give themselves a little buffer because again, blackberries do grow a foot a day. And if we do have, you know, active space and sidewalk, we want to make sure we can try to keep it off. Will be difficult, right? Because you can't just hit it with the mowing arm like you can on the southern part of Two Seventy-Fifth. So yeah, we try to maintain it as best we can adjacent and, uh, and move on.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Henry. Uh, Councilmember Lingle?
Yeah, the first, uh, point is that the way this particular Agenda Bill was written up was very explicit and very helpful because what it did was really come in a line with some of the things we've been talking about in a finance administration, which giving a more holistic picture of what a project costs. So I want to acknowledge that and, and thank the director for that, uh, description. The, the thing that has caught my attention around all of this has to do with when we take on the obligation of maintaining Puget Sound Energy, uh, land. And so there's been a little bit of discussion. Uh, the director has been helpful in answering some of my questions. And, uh, I'm glad to hear the clarification that what we're really going to do at this point is simply to maintain about twenty feet along the line of our sidewalk. Nevertheless, we, uh, in November of twenty nineteen, agreed to an agreement with Puget Sound Energy, which really related to a much different project. It was, uh, at that time, we were envisioning a thirty thousand square foot area that we would maintain. And there is a written agreement with Puget Sound Energy to that effect. And since we are, and it was specific to recreation area. And our attorney has, uh, referenced that in their opinion, uh, specific to, uh, gift of public funds. And, but more important, the gift of public funds just really has to do with what can we afford to do? And so, um, in looking at that agreement with Puget Sound Energy, which I want to be specific in this, is that I think it's a very difficult agreement. And I think the director had a really tough time getting that agreement. But I think there is a termination clause in that agreement. And I think it's appropriate for the director, the mayor, under her signature, uh, to send a letter to Puget Sound Energy, letting them know that we will not be developing the recreation area. And that what we will be doing is, under other statutes, which, uh, the director has provided me, uh, be maintaining the area along the edge of the sidewalk. But we will not be engaging in maintenance in the larger area. And philosophically, what this means to me is us understanding that even if it's only a small amount of staff time, that staff time does add up. Uh, we were looking at the possibility of an additional staff person in Public Works to maintain lands. And we need to start explaining to the, the citizens that we just can't always give them, um, large amounts of maintenance area relative to what the survey showed, which is they'd like to see some things in some other areas in terms of parks money. So I guess, um, I think the Agenda Bill is well-written. I think this has been, uh, a hard worked project. Uh, I would like to see that the mayor send a letter to Puget Sound Energy clarifying that we will not do the recreation area if in fact that is how council decides to vote this evening. And I will be supporting, uh, alternate one and alternate three, but not the recreation area.
Thank you, Councilmember Lingle. Any other council members like to speak to this? Councilmember Hoag?
So, um, I did a little research and I, I apologize, I didn't have time to call you. Director Lenishewski, but I looked back in November to our November meeting, the first meeting of the month. The, um, this Puget Sound Energy contract was on the agenda, but the contract didn't get in the packet. Then I looked to the next meeting to see what the minutes were for that meeting. And it doesn't look like we approved the Puget Sound Energy contract. And so I'd kind of like to know whether the council approved the contract or not. I'd also like to know whether or not, because it says in there that, um, the plans for that area are to be approved by Puget Sound Energy at thirty percent, ninety percent, a hundred percent design. And I just want to know whether they approved the work, which I guess if we're not going to be, you know, using that property, it doesn't really matter all that much. But the contract's pretty detailed and it's a twenty-year contract. I don't know that I just want to cancel it. I'd like to know more about it. I, I guess I'd like to know whether, whether the council approved it for one. But I'd also like to know more about this contract. Are you planning on using any of Puget Sound Energy's property is what I'd like to know? When you're, you said that you're going to do fifteen feet or twenty feet. Does that go into their property? If it does, then this contract has to stay in existence. So I think council should discuss this contract in more detail in the future, but.
So, I have an approval in the packet, well, in the clerk's file dated December sixth of two thousand and nineteen. Um, the contract is to allow the city to place its improvements. In this case, curb gutter, sidewalk, landscape, grid, three trees. And then whether we do or don't put activity stations in it and maintain that area on our behalf. And pretty much, as I've mentioned before, the curb line that exists today is very close in general, along the entire alignment of being the property line. There's a couple of spots where the curb line is at the property line. We have a foot or two of dirt in some spots behind the curb line that is the seat right away. Then the rest of it is all Puget Sound Energy land. So these improvements, for the most part, are all in and on PSC land. As are other items to the north and south, uh, this phase of project. So I guess with that said, the contract itself is signed. I don't know if the clerk has found the exact date we passed to that council. I'm going to guess the first meeting in December, last meeting in November.
November nineteenth is when it was approved.
And, uh, what was the vote count on that, Ms. Wykoff? Was it unanimous?
It was six, yes. And I believe that's because we had an absence at that. Yeah, Mr. Remington was not in attendance. So it was a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I don't believe, and I did go over this with Councilmember Lingle. Article four point one, I don't believe we are strapping ourselves with anything other than maintaining what we need to do, uh, for our use. And additionally, your, your questions on, um, their approvals, yes, we do have documentation of Puget Sound Energy's approvals of the plan sets as we've done, which is kind of why the street trees are very difficult. They, they allow very few trees in and around their power corridors, which is why the ones that we have had to select are fairly expensive, relatively speaking. Uh, we're still trying to change that through them, but we, you know, we're open for anything. Uh, it's just very limited on what we can put there. So we can answer most of those questions.
Um, Councilmember Lingle and then Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, uh, what I'm trying to highlight here is I'm not getting into approvals, non-approvals, you know? Um, but what I want to be sure we do is we're really clear about what we're maintaining, what we're not maintaining. And that's why I, um, have suggested that what we need maybe is some type of a letter to Puget Sound Energy just clarifying whatever the vote is this evening and what that means in terms of square footage. Because in all the past Agenda Bills, from what I can see, we're talking about maintaining a very large area, thirty thousand square feet. So, you know, a bit shy of an acre. And, you know, the project's been controversial anyway. And I, I would like to see us make it less controversial. And I think the way to do that is simply send a letter to Puget Sound Energy clarifying what we're going to do, what our decision was and what we're going to do, what we're not going to do. And we don't have to get into a major cancellation necessarily. But if we, we keep operating in ambiguities, it makes it really hard to move forward as we try to refine budget expenditures. And one of the other, uh, past descriptions under, I think it was the November Agenda Bill, had to do with something we've already deliberated and it has been contentious, which is whether or not we need more, uh, Public Works staff to do maintenance. Now, one of the things that was very helpful from the director, uh, was clarification that it really wasn't that big an imposition, if you want to call it, to, to do the maintenance around the edges. That's great. Um, I just don't want us to have an ambiguity with Puget Sound Energy because we're talking about a fairly significant swath of land with blackberries. Blackberries do not go away in my development experience. They just keep growing back. And so I want to be sure we are not inadvertently tying ourselves on to maintaining land beyond what we absolutely have to do. That's all I'm trying to say.
Yeah. And I believe Article four point one explicitly says that, right? And I'll just read it. City of Duval will operate and maintain a recreational trail at its sole cost and expense. In addition to maintaining a recreational trail and all trail-related improvements, City of Duval shall be responsible for managing the growth of all vegetation within the recreational trail footprint, right? That's our space, not the, not the fifty we're saying we will maintain and we're responsible and they're not going to do it for us, maintain that.
That's fine. It's no longer recreational space. It is a sidewalk. It's voted down. It is no longer.
Member Lingle, Councilmember Lingle, point of order here. Um, please don't interrupt.
But I just want to be sure we are clear. If this alternative is not voted, it is no longer recreational space.
I, I think we should ask our legal staff to.
It's a sidewalk. It's not a recreational space if it's voted down.
Councilmember Lingle, point of order, please stop. Please let the director finish. Point of order.
Please.
Councilmember, Councilmember Lingle, stop. Councilmember Lingle, you need to let the director. You're going to need to be expelled from this meeting if you cannot.
I'm asking you to relinquish your gavel.
I'm not relinquishing my gavel. I am finishing the meeting. Mr. Kenny, can you please step in? Unmuted, Mr. Kenny.
Okay, well, my, my understanding is there was a question on the floor and the Public Works Director was answering. So can we let him finish his answer?
And then, Mr. Kenny, I think we have a couple of questions for you as well.
Okay. Well, I heard one about whether it's recreational or not. And I can look into that and looking at the agreement. I pulled the agreement up on the screen. It is described as a recreational trail throughout that agreement. And so my understanding is that the trail will remain. Is that true?
No.
Uh, council, but please let the director answer this, please.
It is a sidewalk and trail project. The Parks Trails and Open Space Plan of the City of Duval identifies this as a trail. Trailway, which is why parks impact fees are eligible to be expended on the trail or the sidewalk element. That is the only point I have to make. It's not indicative of inclusiveness of the activity station. This trail is identified in the P T O S. That is all.
Councilmember Napland?
So I'd, I'd have to go back and listen to the tape, but I, I very specifically remember asking a question when this, um, contract came forward. The question was, are we obligating ourselves to maintain the entire thirty feet? Are we only obligating ourselves to maintain the actual improvement? And the answer I received when this came forward was we only have to maintain the portion of the thirty feet that we need to improve. So if we only improve ten feet, we only have to take care of ten feet. We never obligated ourselves to the full thirty feet. That is the answer I received when I asked the question at the meeting. So if that is not true, I would like clarification on it. And I, it, I'm just, one way or the other, I, I don't know. It's, it's just that, I did ask that very specific question. And what I recall is the answer was we are only obligated to take care of the improved portion of the thirty feet. So I think there's a little bit of confusion. There's fifty feet, there's thirty feet, and then there's the improvement. What do we have to, what are we obligated to, um, maintain? And I do think that we can maintain a little bit extra to keep, uh, um, blackberries from encroaching. So we have, we can do that, but we have not obligated ourselves to maintain anything more than what we improved of the quarter. So maybe that, I think that is where it gets down to it. And it could be, at some point, we need to send, uh, Puget Sound Energy, just like Councilmember Lingle said, and said, here's our improvement. We're going to maintain this part and just, you know, define the area. So, Councilmember, or, uh, Director Lenishewski, do you recall answering my question in that way? Or did I misunderstand?
I doubt you misunderstood. I know your memory is like a steel trap. So I would say the space we are within is a fifty-foot space. We are allowed to, which for the best flexibility of the city, to do whatever we had hoped to do. We had thirty feet to do it in. We will maintain the footprint. Essentially, we choose to maintain within the thirty feet. No more is required than the recreational trail's footprint. So that is, again, approximately fifteen to twenty feet along the space, exclusively area around the big maple, which it goes much wider. It goes to the boundary of the thirty feet. Um, that is, that is it.
Councilmember Hoag?
So, has Puget Sound Energy approved the plan?
Yes.
So they approved it with us using ten or fifteen feet of the, okay. Is it possible to reduce the size of the sidewalk?
So the minimum is five. We have six. The thing to consider is when you are adjacent to a curb and gutter, right? With our landscape strip, you actually have effectively five and a half feet of hard walkable space. So yes, we have five-foot sidewalks in places. Yes, we have the reality of five and a half. The six-foot was planned. Uh, we have a contract amount proposed in here to reduce it by one foot, say, is eighty, eight hundred bucks. Reducing it by half a foot, which would put it commensurate with a regular sidewalk that's adjacent to a curb line, you would save forty-four hundred bucks. So there are some things to consider. It is a nice space. The opportunity to put sidewalk in it is, is here, which is great. Do I care that it's five or six? Not particularly, but walking, you know, with your own spouse and a dog. You know, you fill up five feet and I think it's a fairly heavily trafficked area. And it's certainly warranted for five feet, or six feet, sorry.
Councilmember Iyer?
Yeah, I, I think I'm comfortable with the, uh, with the agreement. Uh, I think my only concern would be that, uh, I don't know if I've said this here, but, uh, I've said this before, that people built the pyramids, but they forget, they, we all forgot what they were for or what, why they were there. Um, and so sometimes in, uh, an agency, we can, you know, go back to a document, start doing something that, um, that, uh, you know, we didn't initially intend and before you know it, we're maintaining it at thirty feet. So my, my bigger concern would be that we, you know, do our checks and balances internally to make sure everybody knows what the deal is and, and, and the scope of, um, uh, of the maintenance, because usually it's just a scope creep. And that's just a, a management, uh, process that, uh, you know, uh, you know, how we dot our i's and cross our t's and let everybody in our groups know. And I think that that's, uh, that's doable and just hopefully, just, you know, us stressing this point, uh, will, will emphasize that. Uh, with that being said, I, I think I'm comfortable with the, the agreement to, uh, for maintenance. I think the, um, I, I'm fine with the, the alternatives. I think, I guess in the future, I'd like to see more, um, more projects when we have a sidewalk project for two hundred thousand. I mean, this is my initial, I kind of take on this whole thing was like, sure, let's see if we can get all this stuff for two hundred thousand dollars. Great. And, uh, I mean, this is like my family in sales. Like, it's like, well, like, you know, the pants were on sale, so I bought shoes and a shirt. And, and it's, you get kind of a death by a thousand cuts. So, um, So, you know, and I think once you start, you know, having these, these are great alternatives. I think that crossing the street, I send my kids out all the time and that's my biggest concern is them crossing the street and and they're going to be like 18 before they can, you know, leave the house unsupervised, I think. But, so I like the alternatives and I think I'm ready to, to kick this one on. So with the one and three, I'm not sure. Are we, are we, are we all picking alternatives here? But I think we're just.
There is a motion on the floor. So Councilmember Ayer, if you'd like to call the question, you can, but there are two council members we haven't heard from yet.
I don't, I don't think there's a motion yet, Mayor.
Wasn't there? I apologize. I thought we had a motion on that already.
Yeah, not for this one, sorry.
Well, then, in that case, if the other council members would like to speak, I'd welcome that. Otherwise, I'd be happy to entertain a motion for options one and three. I'm not seeing anyone that would like to speak. So if a council member would like to make a motion.
Mike Remington, Mayor.
Yeah.
I appreciate all the discussion. I think Matt really helped sum it up for us.
Thank you.
Recognizing we've learned a lot here and, and hopefully moving forward, we'll be able to nail these down. So there isn't the confusion, some of the confusion we've seen. Mayor, I recommend that council approve Agenda Bill 20-70B, a contract to 75th Complete Streets project, including options one and options three.
Thank you, Mayor Pretten.
Councilmember Bernicki, second.
Councilmember Bernicki, second. And is there any further discussion? Councilmember Lengel and then Councilmember Ayer.
I would like to see a direction to the mayor to send a letter to Puget Sound Energy notifying us of any final decision on the recreation area so that it is absolutely clear what area we will maintain. And since the Agenda Bill previously passed designated over 30,000 square feet of land, that is not what we will be maintaining. We will be maintaining the area adjacent to our sidewalk.
All right, there would need to be amendment to the motion.
There you go.
Council, sorry, Mr. Lenaszewski, yes?
I'm sure if they would take your and my word for it, we probably could move on simply.
That's fine with me.
But I, but I also haven't heard the opinion of the rest of council on this. And so that is my concern, sending a letter when we have an agreement in place without hearing from all of the council members. Councilmember Ayer.
I think it would be, I think it would be simple enough and it could be a letter to the file and the, and the closing of the, you know, this is where we landed on FYI. I don't think it needs to be a confrontational letter. I think it would do the purpose. And I think it would be something that we could include with the doc, the, in our, you know, public works folders that we have the, that, this, you know, thing. It could be. So I think if it's, if Director Lenaszewski feels that that's something that he can do administratively, I think that would be acceptable to memorialize this conversation in paper.
Okay. Any other council members want to comment? Councilmember Napland.
I'm supportive of that. And I also just want to say I don't want Director Lenaszewski to feel like we're beating him up on this. And you know, he brings up a lot of ideas. Many of them are just fantastic. I'm so appreciative of the lighting suggestion, the intersection improvements. There's so much good in this project. And I don't want that to get lost on this struggle we've had with the project. And, and I'm thankful we asked questions about the activity station and apparently the community does not want them. And so I think we learned a lot and I don't want Director Lenaszewski to think that we're ganging up on him or somehow not appreciating what he's done on this project. It's been a lot of work for everyone. So anyway, I just want to give those final words, but I do appreciate the idea of memorializing this conversation. Otherwise, we might have it again and again and again. Who wants that? So.
All right. Any other council members? We've got three that would like us to send a letter. Councilmember McHenry.
Yeah, I think I agree with, you know, what's been said. I don't know that we need a formal amendment to that or if that's just something administratively he could take care of.
We can do it administratively. I just did not want to move forward with a letter without hearing from the majority of council. I think that that would be inappropriate otherwise. So we can do that in that conversation. And is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the contract for options one and three, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you. And I will say, you know, as a point of personal privilege, I'm after working on this sidewalk area for, with Mr. Lenaszewski for, what, 12, 13 years now, to see this final segment coming to fruition is a huge win for our community, especially with the additional safety enhancements that are coming forth for one of our busiest parks. So the discussion has been tough, but it's been good. So thank you, council, for moving this forward in our community. I know that in the long run, we'll be very, very appreciative of this decision as a whole. So with that, we will move on to Agenda Bill 20-66C, which means it's Third Touch Resolution Authorizing the Use of Electronic and Digital Signatures in the City of Duval and Adopting an Electronic and Digital Signature Policy for Discussion and or Decision. Ms. Wykoff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Clerk Jody Wykoff. Just for most of you, nothing I'm about to say is going to be changed from the last meeting. However, Councilmember Ayer and some of the public may not know what this is for. So just a quick summary. This is a policy that allows the city to use electronic signatures, including facemail signatures, which would basically be print, sign, scan, email, and print and sign and scan and email. We are looking at getting a platform for digital signatures. That decision has yet to be made and there will be a cost to that platform. Once staff has had a chance to analyze the two options that we're looking at, we will run it by administration for their approval. And then if need be, we will take it back to council for their approval if it is not within the mayor's signing authority. Any questions?
Seeing no questions, would a council member like to make a motion?
Mayor Mike Remington.
Yes, go ahead.
I recommend that council approve Agenda Bill 20-66C Resolution Authorizing the Use of Electronic and Digital Signatures in the City of Duval and Adopting an Electronic and Digital Signature Policy.
We have a motion on.
Matthew Ayer would like to second that.
Councilmember Henry already seconded it. Thank you, though. It's good that we have more than one. So any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And thank you to Ms. Wykoff for developing this policy and bringing it forward and helping to simplify those things that we can simplify with city operations, especially during these times. Moving forward to Agenda Bill 20-67C Resolution Adopting a New Policy for Paying for Meals and Incidental Business Expenses and Repealing Resolutions 0803 and 1107 for Discussion and or Decision. Ms. Mason. You're on mute, Ms. Mason.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and the public. Dana Mason, Finance Director. Let me share my screen here. And all right, so most of you have already seen this, but Councilmember Ayer has probably not. Let's see, so travel and meals policy. So why change? Currently, staff looks to two places for guidance on city-related meals and travel. Duval Municipal Code 41080, adopted in 1977 and, or 1997 in Resolution 1107, which was adopted in 2011. DMC mostly addresses vehicle use and just briefly, briefly authorizes the reimbursement of authorized travel costs, accommodation and meals necessarily incurred while on city business. Resolution applies, 1107 applies mainly to non-travel meals and expenses. Neither policy addresses how much someone could spend on meals and travel. So as best practices suggest, the new policy encourages economic travel, uses per diem rates for lodging and meals when traveling, addresses non-travel meals separately using per diem as a guideline, requires pre-approval for travel, requires approval for any exceptions to the policy, requires the timely submission of receipts for non-per diem expenditures, requires event agendas with travel claims, and requires approval by a direct supervisor. And then the new policy also allows employees in travel status to use their purchase card if they want to for a meal up to the per diem rate. And an itemized receipt has to be required, is required. Receive the per diem rate for meal with no receipt necessary, which saves a lot on paperwork, and receive per diems for meals in advance. Uses per diem as a guideline for non-travel meals rather than reasonable or necessary costs, which differs from person to person, addresses mild reimbursements for employees who receive car allowance, adds a definition section for clarification, addresses non-staff member travel and no shows. And new at the last meeting, not this meeting, was allow light refreshments when public meeting is held for the purpose of soliciting feedback from constituents. And then changes since the last meeting, the Duval Municipal Code has been the language a council member recommended that instead of using guidance, we use the requirements on the reimbursement of travel-related costs. So the action needed is to approve the resolution and then adopt the ordinance amending Duval Municipal Code. Are there any questions? Let me stop sharing.
Are there any questions from Ms. Mason? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve this Agenda Bill?
Mayor Mike Remington. I recommend council approve Agenda Bill 20-67C Resolution Adopting a New Policy for Paying for Meals and Incidental Business Expenses and Repealing Resolutions 0803 and 11-07.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Senator Napland.
Great. So we have Mayor Pretten Remington made the motion. Councilmember Napland seconded. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you. And thank you to Ms. Mason for your work on this. This improves on additional work that has been done on the last couple of years and provides some simplicity and accountability. And it's much appreciated that the council supports that. Agenda Bill 20-68C Ordinance Amending Duval Municipal Code Chapter 4.10.080 Expense Reimbursement Providing for Severability and Establishing an Effective Date for Discussion and or Decision. Ms. Mason.
So this is just the second part. There's two parts to the travel and meals policy that need to, one need to be repealed and replaced. And then the other one needed to be amended. This is the municipal code that was, is amended, being amended.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Mayor Pretten Remington. You're on mute, Mayor Pretten.
You, I jumped in a bit quick. I was going to make a motion. We approved this, but I think discussion comes first.
You can make a motion. Discussion can be had after the motion's made or you can discuss previous prior. It's all body.
I'll make the motion. Mayor, I move that City Council approve Agenda Bill 20-68C Ordinance Amending Duval Municipal Code Chapter 4.10.080 Expense Reimbursement Providing for Severability and Establishing an Effective Date.
Second, McHenry.
We have a motion by Mayor Pretten Remington and a second by Councilmember McHenry. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we have no further business and we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.